Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of North and East Plans Panel. My name is councillor Acton and I will be chairing today's meeting. Could I remind everyone that today's meeting is being livestreamed on Leeds City Council YouTube channel so that the members of the public can observe the meeting without needing to be present? Could I also remind members of the public present that this is a formal meeting while we welcome your attendance? We ask you to do not approach members of the panel during the meeting and that the proceedings are observed quietly and without any interruption. If this is not adhered to you, may be asked to leave and the meeting will be suspended while this is facilitated. North and East Plans Panel deals with applications from north, east and east of the city. The aim of the panel is to hear all the relevant information from applicants, members of the public and council officers to help members of the panel to make their decision. Could I now invite members and the officers to introduce themselves and mute your microphone once you have introduced yourself? If I can start from the left, David?
Hi, I'm David Jones, area planning manager for the East team.
Good afternoon, I'm Lisa Brannan, Principal Engineer, HIGWES.
Good afternoon, councillor Craig Timmins, and I am substituting for councillor Jenkins.
Good afternoon, councillor Nicole Lloyd from the Temple News and Ward.
Hi councillor Adel Ray from Bramley and Staningley Ward.
Afternoon, Hannah Bethall, councillor for Kirkstal.
Good afternoon, councillor Michael Miller, representing Kipixhamethly Ward.
Councillor Simon Siri from the Putty Ward.
Ryan Stevenson, councillor for Haywood Ward.
Debbie Oldham and Clark to the panel.
Amy Davis, legal officer stepping in to advise on this panel.
Hello, David Newbury, I'm the lead planning officer for the plans panel.
Thank you Craig for covering this afternoon's meeting. Moving to the agenda, could I ask the clerk to go through item one and five please? One and two five please.
Thank you Chair. There are no appeals under against refusal of inspection of documents. Under agenda item two, there's no exempt information. Under agenda item three, there are no late items. Under agenda item four, could I ask members to declare any interest they may have? I'll take silence as there are none. Under agenda item five, apologies have been received from councillor Jenkins and councillor Timmins is attending as his substitute. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Item six, minutes of the previous meeting held on 27th of March 2025. Do members accept these minutes as a correct record? I'll assume correct unless indicated otherwise. Matter arising from the minutes, are there any matters arising from the minutes? No? Okay. Item seven, Dave, could you please present this to the members?
Thank you Chair. This is an application for a new drive-through restaurant for McDonald's. The old red line on York Road, I'm sure many, all members will probably be familiar with it, it's a bit of a local landmark as it were. The application's referred by councillor Lennox. She's raised some objections but there are both a decent number of representations for and against the application. So a panel decision seems appropriate as well. In terms of an update for the report, at paragraph 92, it does reference that the applicant would partly fund the off-site highway works. They have changed that to they would fully fund. So that's an update. You'll see from the report that doesn't necessarily have any implications for the officer recommendation. And there is an additional neighbour letter. I believe the resident who's due to speak against the application may make reference to it, but just to summarise the main points, it's from a neighbour, references noise and light pollution, increased traffic and safety risks that flow from that, environmental and health concerns, concerned about impact on property values and zoning incompatibility. And that's referencing the fact that it's a residential area and this particular proposal isn't compatible. Moving on to the presentation, so this is the existing buildings on site which are proposed for removal. And there is a slide at the end of the presentation, so if you just have in mind that image and there's a picture of the proposal, the buildings sort of many years ago, and that's pertinent to refusal reason five. That's just an aerial image just showing the wider site really, you'll see that it's largely hard-surfaced and landscape features are primarily along the boundaries and it's a prominent corner location. And just, it's worth pointing out the specifics of the junction here, and that's of relevance to the proposals, there are works proposed to this particular junction as well as York Road itself. So this is Beldon Drive, the application site is on the left, and those trees largely are retained. This is from York Road looking towards the site, travelling out of the city, and this is travelling into the city. The access is just on here, on the right-hand side, and that's just a closer image, so these two trees would obviously go, but the new access is around this location. I'll just pick up on this particular image as well, there would be a new right-hand ghost lane to turn into the site. And this is the wider site in context. The red line extends all the way down here because of the alterations proposed in terms of the right-turn lane. You'll see some alterations proposed here in terms of pedestrian island and alterations to the junction. This is just a closer image, so you've got the main restaurant building, you've got the drive-through component wrapping round, and then there's parking towards the front and side. Here's the new access arrangements. This is just one of the specific highway plans, you'll see one of the reasons for refusal, and actually linked to some of the other reasons for refusal is reference to the access point being particularly tight. So this just really shows some tracking, vehicle tracking for service vehicles, and the point to note here really is the fact that it was, the tracking would extend into the ghost island when you're accessing the site, and there's some conflict here as well. And then when you're entering the site again, vehicles would be required to swing into what is effectively another lane internally to the site. So you might want to come back to those if there's any particular questions. This is just roof plan and various kit on the roof, but it would be sort of hidden via a parapet wall, and this is the internal layout. So it's just this area here which is the actual restaurant seating area, the rest is kitchen area, back of house, toilets etc. As you would anticipate with a McDonald's, it's a fairly standardised design, and there's some images of what that would look like. That's potentially the most helpful, and you just pick up on some of the details, right turn lane etc. You'll see from one of the reasons for refusal, there's reference to the healthy living agenda and the proximity of existing schools and some sort of spaces that younger people would be inclined to use. So the application site is the black circle in the centre. You've got, this is Whiteley Primary School here, and Grimes Dyke Primary School. There's two, two areas of green space identified. There are others in the area as well, there's another mugger just a bit down here, and there will be other facilities coming online as part of East Leeds Extension around this area as well. But that's really just to show you the relationship between the site, this one specifically to do with the schools and sort of direct walking routes between the two. And this is, if you catch your mind back to that first image of the pub, this is what it used to look like many years ago. That's 1910. You'll see there's, it's recommended for refusal, there's five reasons, three of them are highway-specific, the last reason relates particularly to the loss of a non-designated heritage asset. We don't feel that the proposals are fully justified in that respect, and there's the healthy living agenda reason for refusal, which admittedly is a fairly new thing that's been brought in through the NPPF in December of last year, but we feel it's appropriate to attach that reason for refusal to this particular proposal. That concludes the presentation Chair.
Thank you David. We have a speaker in objection to the proposal, could I invite Ms Leaf to the table? Once you're settled, you will have four minutes to address to the panel please.
I'd just like to say I live with my parents at the side of the proposed site and the speakers for the drive-through will be directly at the side of our gardens. My mum and dad have worked very hard to pay off their mortgage, have worked over pension age so that they could live comfortably. They're not rich people, and just to have that nice garden, that's going to be totally spoilt if this goes in. Also, I mean, it's going to be from seven in the morning till eleven at night, they're long hours, I know it's not 24 hours but they are long hours, that's constant noise, constant stream of cars, pollution. It's just, the noise cancelling fence won't work, like noise, just like we proved that with the car noise and the noise that we got from the pub, we noticed a massive difference the week after the pub had been closed, we could actually speak to each other in the garden without shouting. The car fumes, the smells, the food smells, the litter, the litter will go all over the estate, people won't just stay in McDonald's with the food, it'll go all over the estate. The traffic, no matter what traffic measures you put in, that road is a busy road considering the E-law road's been put in as well, so the traffic's increased already, so that's going to massively increase. Car meets, people gathering loud, high-performance cars in the car park, that's going to be a lot of noise till late at night. Will there be security, considering there's been a lot of trouble at the co-op, which is down East Walklift, which is about five minutes' walk, they've had a lot of trouble with young people there. I believe somebody got stabbed a few months ago as well. It's not a matter of my parents just moving if they don't like it, the 76-year-old have worked all their lives to be able to afford this property, and it's just going to spoil it, the property prices will fall, it's going to ruin the property prices, because nobody wants to live next door to a McDonald's. It's going to be from seven in the morning till eleven at night, seven days a week. My mum and dad just wanted a quiet retirement, and they're not going to get that if this gets approved. I just think it's really unfair for the little person basically. Yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms Leaf? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have the agent on behalf of the applicant, could I invite Mr Wallace to the table? We also have Mr Mosley, who is the McDonald Highway Consultant, to answer any questions only should members have any. Once you have settled, you will have four minutes to address to the members, thank you.
Thank you and good afternoon Chair and members of the panel. As you've heard, officers are recommending refusal of the application, and we're obviously disappointed by that, and I'd like to comment briefly on each of the issues that have been raised. The first issue raised is the proposed means of access, and we strongly disagree that the scheme would result in the unsafe operation of the highway. The highways officer is arguing that the proposed junction is not compliant with the council's transport SPD and the relevant DMRB design standard, but the proposals are in line with the Manual for Streets Two, which is a nationally-accepted and arguably more appropriate and more relevant design standard for this urban location. We've been genuinely surprised by the highways officer's position on this issue, given the context. Firstly, the officer's raised no concerns when the same access arrangement was proposed as part of the previous application for this site, and we don't understand why they've come to a different view this time. Secondly, the scheme has been subject to a road safety audit, which has raised no highway safety concerns. And thirdly, the scheme actually offers a significant improvement over the existing situation because it rationalises two existing accesses, which I don't think the officer took you to earlier, into one, and the one access that is proposed is further away from Beldon Drive than either of the two accesses at the moment. We also introduced a new ghost island as you've heard, so the scheme should actually improve highway safety. Second reason for refusal relates to the potential for the development to result in congestion on the highway network. We don't accept that. We've undertaken detailed traffic modelling, which has demonstrated that there should be no queuing or delay at the proposed site access. We also feel that there is sufficient parking on site to meet demand. However, from talking to the local ward members and residents, we appreciate there is considered to be an existing issue with parking on Beldon Drive, and in order to address that concern, the concern that the scheme could exacerbate that issue, McDonald's have offered to fund an off-street parking scheme on Beldon Drive which has the support of the local ward members. The third reason for refusal relates to servicing and deliveries, and there's no basis for concern there either. There would be just three deliveries a week, just three deliveries a week, which would take place at specific planned time slots, avoiding peak hours, and there is just no reason to think this would result in any concerns in terms of highway safety. The fourth issue raised is the proximity of the restaurant to local schools and other places where young people congregate. But again, there's no basis for this concern, the site lies over 1500 metres from East Leeds Academy and over 400 metres from the nearest primary schools, where children would normally be accompanied by a parent to and from school, and we don't anticipate the restaurant would attract any significant trade from schoolchildren on the way to and from school. On this basis, the scheme isn't in conflict with the hot food takeaway SPD, and there's no conflict with any policies of the development plan or the NPPF. The fifth and final issue raised is non-designated heritage asset. Again, it's not a new issue, and it's not been raised as part of the previous application, and it's simply unfounded. We undertook a heritage assessment and the building is now of very limited significance as the architectural and historic interest of the building has been eroded by significant alterations, extensions and vandalism over time. Furthermore, the loss of the building needs to be balanced against the various benefits of the scheme. These include: removal of a derelict property which is acting as a magnet for crime and antisocial behaviour, creation of 120 new jobs which would be highly accessible to local residents, enhancement of the visual appearance of the site with obvious benefits in terms of residential amenity, and finally, environmental enhancements including the planting of over 50 trees across the site and delivery of an overall biodiversity net gain, including through improvements to the adjacent woodland. Just eight people have objected to the application and 44 have written to the council in support. There is strong support for the scheme from the local residents who see the benefits of the scheme and want to see the site redeveloped. Thank you for your time and I hope you'll support the application today.
Could I now invite members if you have any questions for Mr Wallace? Councillor Bithle?
Thank you. Yeah, it was a strong flex to lead with our policies outfit for a purpose, and which is certainly what your first statement sounded like. In terms of the document that's been sent to us with sort of the more detailed rationale about why you disagree with the recommendation and the reasons for it, it talks about in there the fact that there would currently be planning permission for that pub to reopen and it to therefore have access. So I guess it feels a bit smoke and mirrors to use that as a reason for, a reason for this development to go ahead, given that the volume of covers and the length of stay of a pub versus a drive-through, which is inherently there in order to be quick and have a high turnover of vehicles, seems a nonsensical argument to me personally, and I haven't, from what you've said yet, heard a great deal that's putting that to bed, in the sense that I guess there's an acceptance that there is going to be a much higher volume of traffic, and I would like to hear a little bit more about the modelling that you've done in terms of what impact it is going to have, because honestly I can't believe it will have no impact, but I look to hear the information. In terms of the information on the healthy living element, again, the explanation, and again here, has just, I feel, completely missed the point of that work in the NPPF. The locations need to be places that young people congregate, so we're looking at 280 metres for one of the open spaces that young people congregate, 200 metres for another playing area, we've got two schools within 500 metres. We've already heard today, in fact, that there's a co-op five minutes away where young people congregate, so in terms of it hitting places where young people congregate and being close and therefore contributing to an obesity genetic environment, I again haven't heard anything, so I'd like some further information on how you think putting a McDonald's there is not going to have an impact on public health, given that planning policy is forever being strengthened now around this access. Also, I'd be interested to know what your thoughts are around advertising and how, based on the strong brand image that McDonald's has, the impact of the advertising in the environment as well, and what advertising you're planning on putting around the local area, what style of advertising you're likely to want to engage with. And I also think it's important that we think, when you spoke just now, you talked about young people from primary school will be accompanied by parents, and therefore this isn't going to have an impact, but we know that pester power, we know that even people driving past because of the branding of this type of takeaway has an impact on young people's likelihood for engaging in hot takeaway, and also we know that having policies such as these that mean that we don't put takeaways this close to where children congregate has a positive impact on childhood obesity. So I'd just be interested in how you think that's going to fit in with your plan. Thank you.
Before Mr Wallace, if you, before you can come in, I'll ask David to just clear one or two points what councillor Bithle have just raised.
Okay, thank you Chair. From what councillor Bithle's just said, it sounds as though there may have been a document which has been distributed by the applicant to members of the plans panel. I would just be cautious, from members' point of view, just to be cautious about how much weight you place on that document. I'm very conscious that it hasn't been in the public domain. Officers, as far as I'm aware, no officers have actually seen that document or could comment on that document. It doesn't go to the substantive points that you're raising councillor Bithle, from the questions that you're asking, but just be mindful that we haven't seen that document and it hasn't been in the public domain, and therefore I would say just be careful about how much weight that you place on that particular document. Thank you Chair.
On the access related issue?
Yeah, I think, if that's okay, sorry councillor, I just thought it'd be best if I answered the highways question. So you'd raised questions about the capacity and the trip generation, I'll try and keep it relatively succinct. So yeah, there's an open acceptance within all the documentation that we've done, that there will be an increase in traffic on site, that's not something we shied away from, common sense suggests a drive-through will generate more than a pub, that's something we wholly accept, and that is what we've addressed in the transport assessment and the, what we call capacity assessment. So the junction modelling effectively, how would the junction perform? So you're quite right, there would be an increase in traffic on site. We are rationalising the two access points that are currently in situ to a single one. That moves around another 10 to 15 metres further away from the, trying to get my bearings now, sorry, the south-easternmost access, so the one that was shown on the screen adjacent to the woods. It does use a proportion of the corner to increase the size of that junction, the distance from Beldon Drive. The way we have to assess junctions is we look at a future scenario. So we undertake a traffic count during the peak periods, when we look at three for drive-throughs, that's the AM and PM normally you would do for residential, but for drive-throughs we also look at a Saturday lunchtime, which is the general peak of any drive-through or retail-type scheme. We have to undertake a traffic survey for three or four hours in each of those periods and then look at the worst hour of traffic during those periods. Sorry if I'm teaching you a suck eggs as well, I'm just taking you through the process. We also then look at today's scenario, we then add five years' traffic growth on to it, which is from a national traffic forecast but with a local factor for this area of Leeds. We model the junction again, and then we also add the development traffic to that junction and assess the junction again. In terms of the scenario being 2029 plus development, which is the worst-case scenario, that also includes any committed developments that Leeds will have asked us to look at. In that case, the junction is performing with a maximum of a single vehicle queue in both the PM and Saturday peak periods, which are the worst periods of the day. So that's assessing the A64 at peak times and looking at the amount of traffic that would be generated by the site. So that single queue is actually within the site itself, it doesn't occur on the right-turn ghost. So the modelling that we've done on the, sorry, a right-turn ghost is effectively creating a dedicated lane in the middle of the road for people to turn right into site. The modelling suggests that there'd be no queuing during any periods that we've assessed. You okay with that?
Just, it isn't just the one junction in the vicinity though, so have we got junction capacity figures and at what capacity it'll be operating once it's in place in 2029?
Yeah, that is the assessment that's in the transport assessment, so we always look at it as a worst case.
Yeah.
So it's 2029, including McDonald's and including any committed development.
Yeah, so what's the percentage on each of those branches of the junction for 2029?
Do you mean turning, which way people will be turning, sorry, I'm not sure.
So in other plan, planning applications, it might be that this task hasn't been done, but in other planning applications, we will have a diagram that shows each of the junctions.
Yeah, I have all those, yeah.
And it will show us what percentage after this is in capacity, it will be, so is it running at 100% capacity? Is it at 80% capacity?
Sorry, I was saying I was trying to keep it succinct, I didn't want to get into those numbers, let me just get that for you. So I'll just give you the worst, the worst case now, which is the PM peak, and that is performing at, we have ratio of load to capacity, so when it hits one, that is when a junction is at its capacity. Generally, we try to design junctions at 0.85, so there's a bit of tolerance within that. The worst case, it's at 0.5 RSC with a queue of one, and that is the PM peak, that is the worst case in terms of the capacity of the junction.
Sorry, that's for the junction into with the ghost lane, yes?
That's correct.
So what about that other junction?
We've also modelled Beldon Drive and we've also modelled the, well, what we call the Seacroft Roundabout effectively. As a worst case at Beldon Drive, sorry, I've just got to go through the figures very quickly. Again, the worst case is the PM peak, and that is at 0.56 from Beldon Drive with a maximum queue of one car.
Okay, thanks.
That's in table seven point two, if you wanted to look in the transport assessment.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Stevenson? Yes, sure.
Can I just come back on some of the other points that were raised by the councillor? The first thing, can I say, I didn't say at all that the council's policies weren't fit for purpose. We can have a disagreement over the interpretation of the policies and whether the proposals fit with policy. That doesn't amount to the same thing as you suggested, so I did not say that, and it's worth clearing that up for the record. On the issue of paragraph ninety-seven of the MPPF and the council's own SPD policy, just to be clear, this proposal meets the requirements of the council's SPD. That imposes a restriction within four hundred metres of secondary school. As I said in my script earlier, we're one point five kilometres from the nearest secondary school, which is the East Leeds Academy. The site's about five hundred metres from primary schools. In terms of that, we'd be on the distance, and the SPD only relates to secondary schools because it was only felt to be. By the time the SPD was produced, it was only felt to be relevant in relation to secondary schools. So we have to follow policy, and McDonald's have followed the policy, and they've done that in looking at this site. So that's that point. In terms of the MPPF, the MPPF doesn't provide clear definition of what walking distances might be. And I guess on that basis, the council can interpret that the way it chooses to interpret it. However, most planning documents refer to four hundred metres, including, for example, the London Plan, which is being subject to examination, and the generally accepted rule is four hundred metres is the applicable rule, which is what the council applied in its SPD. So we're not in that zone which you could regard as restricted. Okay? In terms of your point about advertising, we haven't made a signage application yet. If there's particular sensitivity around advertising around this site, we could talk to officers about that and how we conclude that. McDonald's obviously want to advertise their premises, they want it to be clearly signed so that people know how to access the site, for example. But if there's sensitivity around signage to the site, then that's something we can discuss at that stage, but that would follow any grant of planning permission.
So we have green spaces where young people congregate, two hundred metres away, which would therefore, based on the definition you've done, be within four hundred metres of walking distance, correct?
Okay, Councilor Stevenson?
Thank you Chair. In the, could we just go back to the image of how it's going to look with cars coming in and out, please? The Beldon Drive, that's here. During the deliberations with officers and on the last application as well, at any point, did you explore an entrance off of Beldon Drive, i.e. to limit the movement off of the A sixty-four, just to that one junction?
Yeah, we did actually, councillor. The land isn't within the ownership of the site, and it's also not adopted highway, so it's not within the applicant's gift to deliver that. It was something we considered very early on in the process when we were looking at options for how the site would come forward. But effectively, the land in between the footway and the site is outside of the adopted highway or the site's ownership.
I think, can I just extend that as well? We didn't see, we didn't see any particular benefit in highway safety terms from taking that approach. But we then had the issue being raised of the off-site parking and concerns around on-street parking at the moment on Beldon Drive, which it was felt would be exacerbated by introducing an access from Beldon Drive. So we effectively ruled it out for all of those reasons really collectively. But it was considered to answer your question.
So it's better to question who owns it, but we'll leave that one there. In terms of the, at the very outset, you mentioned a policy. I didn't quite catch what you said around, the last time you submitted an application, you were judged against one policy and now against another. Can you clarify what those policies are and what the material impact on this application is?
Is that in relation to the highways bits, councillor? Okay, so it's called the Leeds Transportation SPD. That's effectively Leeds City Council's policy on all highways, transportation matters in terms of design, guidance of how, I don't know, residential estate would be developed, how a junction would be designed, et cetera, et cetera. So that is the go-to document for policy. In terms of the position that Leeds are taking as a highway authority, they're saying that the SPD is the policy document, which is quite right. And that with it being a forty mile an hour road, the MRB applies, which is, again, sorry, the Design Manual for Roads and Bridges. That is effectively the national design standard for trunk roads and A roads. Our position on this scheme, which I know Leeds highways don't share, is that we believe that the scheme we've designed is appropriate for the site that we're putting forward. It's also gone through a road safety audit process without any issues arising, and we believe that Manual for Streets Two, which is also another guidance document nationally accepted, that the road would be more akin to an urban setting and therefore doesn't necessarily need to meet all the standards of a typical A road you would expect outside of an urban area.
I think my final question is, could you just confirm that this is planned to be a sitting restaurant as well? It's not just a place like your sort of Starbucks drive-through, it's a, it is a sitting restaurant as well?
Yes, there's at least fifty seats inside the restaurant. There may be more than that actually, but I would say at least fifty.
Any other questions? Councilor Bithal?
Yeah, just very quickly, I meant to ask it before. Can we have some comments on the image we saw as well of the HGV turning circle and the impact that we'll be expecting to be having?
Sure, hopefully it's on screen now, which makes my life a little bit easier. So this is something we do get comments on quite regularly from highway authorities, where a service vehicle manoeuvre, you can see the red line is the wheels of the vehicle, and the green line is the overhang of the body. So in terms of this one, it's a delivery coming from ELO, heading towards the site, turning right into sight, and effectively servicing the restaurant. You can see the hatching as you come round the radius, just where the mouse pointer is now. You know, we can see that the vehicle overruns that central line as it's shown. The context of this is though, is that we are talking about something that would be three deliveries a week outside of peak hours. And to, you know, if you were designing every junction to accommodate every type of service vehicle that you'd have, you'd have oversized junctions and inefficient layouts for something that's going to occur on such an infrequent basis. We don't consider it to be a highway safety issue. McDonald's run over fourteen hundred restaurants, very similar servicing across all restaurants that are drive-throughs, and this is typical of the type of scheme that we would see. To design it for something that's three movements in a week, this is showing the out movement, which doesn't cross the centre line. So my position would be that for three movements coming outside of peak hours a week, crossing that centre line for maybe a period of seconds, from our position, we don't believe that's an unreasonable proposal.
Thank you, that's really helpful. I'm actually more concerned, I think, because I take that point in terms of it being so infrequently. I guess there's two questions for me. In terms of the frequency of deliveries, surely that would be based on how successful the restaurant is? Would that not, or do the deliveries themselves just become bigger each time that you still only have the three? And then my other comment is around the accessible parking. I'm more worried about the fact that the line for when it's doing the servicing will be coming out, taking out some of the accessible hatching. So is servicing always going to be outside of the hours when somebody could be parked, i.e. outside of opening hours? Or is there actually likely to be a conflict with a particularly vulnerable group using the car park? Thank you.
In terms of deliveries, that's not something that we would expect to fluctuate at all. And in terms of waste as well, a number of those things are taken away with the deliveries as they address the site. Obviously, I'm not a commercial for McDonald's, but my understanding is that the restaurants that we've done, and you know, the hundreds that we've worked on, deliveries do not change. So they effectively have a market-leading logistics system, as you'd expect. It's inefficient for a company like McDonald's to be delivering during peak times. It just is nonsensical to be doing it at times when the restaurants are at their peak. So I think that covers off the first point that you're asking, hopefully. In terms of the second point, in terms of delivery, generally they are controlled by what we call servicing and delivery management plans. So every McDonald's in the country has a delivery information document. They also have the same company making all deliveries. So it's a company called Martin Brower, and that is a national supplier that provides all servicing vehicles. So a question we often have as well is, well, you're showing us a standard rigid vehicle, why is there not a HGV there, you know, an articulated HGV? They are specifically agreed at the stage the restaurant comes forward that that will be the vehicle that delivers here. It will not increase in size, and the basis of the commercial decision McDonald's are making is it will be on the basis it's three deliveries a week. Now, I do take your point that it's located next to the accessible spaces, but under these delivery information documents, the vehicle where it's servicing now is shown on screen, it reverses into that position, I think that's on the other tracking drawing, but effectively it would be the same swept path that's shown there for the vehicle leaving. Now, those would be cone'd off during the period of delivery, and it's generally a half an hour window that is absolutely nailed on because of the system that they use. And that would be done by the restaurant manager or assistant manager at the time to cone that off. So I do accept that it's in proximity to the accessible spaces, but this is no dissimilar to any other restaurant that they operate, and that has been without issue, is my understanding.
So it's the tyre tracks, I know they've got specific...
Yeah, we did, we just call it a swept path, yeah.
Perfect, the swept path.
Tyre tracks is easier.
And the green of the external wall of the vehicle
Yep.
goes over the actual accessible bay. So would during delivery times, that first accessible bay also be cordoned off? Cone'd off, sorry?
My expectation would be not, given it doesn't actually cross the area where the vehicle would be parked. I would say not. If it was something that became apparent at the time, it would just be coning off one of the accessible spaces for the period of the delivery.
Councilor Lloyds?
Thanks Chair. Just in terms of the drive-through itself, do you envisage there being a tailback there? I ask that because, one, I've got, we've got Colton McDonald's in our ward, and I live two streets away. And I know it's just been reconfigured because of the amount of usage. And I have to say, the junction there, I do take on board there's more eateries there than there would be here. But the junction there is absolutely not fit for purpose now. The amounts of complaints we get as ward councillors, in terms of it just being sometimes at standstill at certain times in the weekend, for instance. Unfortunately, we don't have the money to be able to change the junction there, but I can envisage that happening on this road.
Thanks councillor. In response, I think there are some historical sites that McDonald's have had from previous years, where the drive-through lanes maybe haven't been as long as they would be now. So they have done some retrospective changes to some across the UK, where they've gone from a single order point to two order points to try and reduce that dwell time. And in some circumstances, they've been able to increase the length of the drive-through lane. So it is in table six point five of the transport assessment. I appreciate this is an awful lot of things to see, but I'll give you a worst case, like I did with the junction capacity assessment. So this is based on the average of other schemes of a similar nature, and the maximum queue length would be, again, in the Friday PM peak, a maximum queue of thirteen vehicles. Now, the drive-through lane itself can accommodate sixteen in this case, until it reaches the edge of the car park. So the logic within the analysis that we've done, it would be a thirteen car maximum queue with space for three, which gives you a bit of a buffer should there be a larger demand. If there were a larger demand, there is still space for, you know, that anomaly to be within the car park. It's not as if it would queue back to the A sixty-four.
Right, thank you. Can't see anyone else showing any hands up, but thank you gentlemen for coming along this afternoon. Can I invite now members for questions to officers? Council Bromley, then Council Ray, and then Council Bithal?
Thank you Chair. Based on what we've heard and the distances between schools and the regulations and guidelines that we have around that currently, does that mean that we wouldn't be able to ask for any kind of protective measures in terms of the visual impact to children, young people, that we'd probably likely see that on a daily basis?
When you say protective measures, you're thinking about different or not normal branding, for example?
I mean, in terms of this fast food outlet, we know that there is a predominant aim towards children. So in terms of advertising and that visual awareness, as soon as you reach what is a very frequently used route.
I mean, McDonald's are what they are in terms of visually, the only thing that isn't subject to the current planning application is actually the adverts. So they would come at some point, and there might be a view to change the height or size or something like that. But ultimately, we wouldn't necessarily have grounds to refuse a sign on, maybe on the grounds you're thinking of. It's more about, is it appropriate within the context of the building, et cetera? So I think ultimately, we would struggle to be able to do something along the lines you're thinking. But ultimately, the reason for refusal is looking to achieve that in a, by saying no to the proposal in principle. And I guess just coming on to some of the points that were made, I think, to be fair, they did set them out about the fact that the proposal, the change in policy has occurred after the SPD was adopted, and it's set out in paragraph sixty-one of the report, the explanation. So, you know, the council's interpretation is all children should be protected. And so we're just seeking to do it via a different mechanism rather than through visual means, as it were.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Ray?
My concern, and it might be inappropriate, is there's a housing estate on the other side of the road just further down. Where are the nearest crossings? Because you can imagine if this is going to attract children, the chances of them going over the York Road, and we know people do speed on there, are they properly catered for in that? Is it likely that they're going to be using that rather than just cutting a cross from the green space which is further up that councillor Bithal referred to?
Just the picture on the, on the screen is, that's an existing pedestrian crossing over York Road itself. In terms of Beldon Drive, I don't believe currently there's crossing points, but there is proposed to be a pedestrian refuge just on the junction, sort of in the middle where you'd expect it. So that would facilitate, I guess, crossing most closely related to the site. But there aren't additional crossings proposed beyond that.
Councilor Bithal?
Thank you. I'm interested in the ghost lane not being wide enough and what that impact is, because it feels like, based on what's been said around there not being any queuing, it'll only be...
only be in there for, the car will only be in that lane for a moment to turn right. So I'd just like to hear what the impact is of that. Also, why do we feel so differently to their transport? If they're saying it's only running at 50% capacity, why do we feel like that's still going to create issues? And then finally, is there a way that we could condition the planning permission to ensure that no under-16s without an adult were allowed to be served? I don't know if that would be something that could be placed through planning.
Okay, so in terms of the right turn lane, DMR, Design Manual for Roads and Bridges, is the appropriate design standards to use for this, in effect, which is basically an A-road, what would have originally, in old terminology, would have been called a trunk road, and it's a 40 mile an hour road, and therefore that is the design standards, and that does stipulate that a right turn, on a right turn lane on a new junction would, should be, well, actually shall be, it's more strong than should be, shall be three metres wide, and they're not proposing that. And the issue is that what you've got is basically for, especially for larger vehicles, they're wider than that, or the overhang, you know, so it doesn't give any room for driver error in terms of placing in that lane and for the through lanes. So that is why that wider width is stipulated, and our view is very much that. So the transport consultant, that point have, so they said, oh, we've done a capacity assessment, and it's not so much about the capacity assessment, it's about the safety and the appropriateness of the design for the type of road. I mean, this road carries more than 22,000 vehicles a day on average, so it's a very high-capacity road, and therefore, you know, it is important that design standards are, you know, the design of a new junction is appropriate for this type of road. And fundamentally, that is the difference, that they are saying that Manual for Streets Two would be applicable, but Manual for Streets Two is not applicable for this basically sort of strategic, you know, primary distributor route, and that is our view, and that's why we've taken the stance that we have.
Just to come back on the highways before you move on, if that's okay. Is there a way that the design could be changed so that they can achieve, I realise it's not for us to redesign, but is there a feasibility, or would that make the other lanes too thin then?
Yeah, so it's partly about, you'd have to encroach into the site, but it's also, it's not just about the right turn lane, whether it's about the junction spacing between Beldon Drive and the access. So it encroaches on the visibility of New Act, but also it's the design internally, you're having to slow down and turn in, and it's a U-turn into the site, basically. So our view is actually that entails more slowing down than just into a right-hand turn because of that need to turn completely within the site as well. So it's difficult really to say that they could find an acceptable proposal with the access directly off the A64.
Yeah, just to come back on the point about no under-16s unless accompanied by an adult, I understand why you're suggesting that. I think ultimately, the difficulty would be that wouldn't really be an enforceable condition, and I think were it, the government sort of wouldn't probably have changed the national policy guidance to pick up on this particular point, because that would be an easy remedy. So the fact that this policy has only recently been introduced sort of talks to the fact that controlling it through a condition would be very difficult. It sounds like something that licensing might be better placed to do, but I don't think these are licensed, so, yeah, it won't get picked up. I think ultimately, the answer would be no.
Right, councillor Stevenson.
Afraid I have quite a few questions, Chair. I've been listening intently. Right, start at the top with the highways issue. So the assertion was, we're applying different transport policy this time than last time. So can we have a response to that from officers, sort of a justification on the different uses and the way it's given to it?
On the previous application, we weren't happy with the proposal either. I think when the, perhaps we weren't as specific on the specific reasons as for this application, and I suppose the new application came in and we revisited it and looked at it to make sure, you know, that we'd covered everything that we thought was appropriate. So there might be some elements that were potentially missed in the first time that we've picked up this second application.
Thanks. In terms of the sort of the rear-ending issue with the turning into the junction, what the images didn't show is, along that stretch, so from memory, you come off of the roundabout, there's a petrol station on the left which has a fast food option in it as well, out of interest. Then I think there's another road junction, then Beldon Ave, then there'd be this, and then at the bottom of the hill, there's the Woodlands one as well, and then the council in my ward are trying to put a park and ride up there as well. So there's a lot of left turns coming up. What's the, or have we assessed the accident data on each of those junctions as part of this?
I haven't assessed on each individual junction, but for, from 2017 to 2023, there were, hang on, I have written it down, there were 12 collisions along, from, between the two roundabouts, of a lot of them sort of shunted, and a lot of that associated with different junctions on that stretch of road. So there are, you know, it has got a collision history, and two of those collisions were associated with Beldon Drive.
One of your number was me on the New Eel or Roundabout, where somebody shunted into the back. Whilst I was eating at McDonald's, actually, but anyway. In terms of the, moving to the health point, refuse the point four. In the, I had a look at the earlier refusal, because it was mentioned in the documents, and we didn't make a point of this at that point in great detail, and I think I heard the answer, the justification for that was because the MPPF changed in December. So presumably then, that meant last time round, we didn't afford any weight to the existing policy we had, which referred to secondary schools and 400 metres.
Yeah, that was the case, yeah.
In terms of the historic elements of it, so a non-designated historic asset, which reads to me, it means it's not a historic asset. So what's the difference between a pub, a pub that's a registered designated asset, and one that's a non-designated asset?
Essentially, it's not of good enough quality to be a listed building, but it's locally important. So that's where the sort of, it's non-designated in terms of formally being designated as a listed building, but the council can consider buildings to be locally significant in that context.
So from a policy point of view, what's the policy backdrop to, so as I understand it, it's not a binary choice, listed or not, there's this sort of tripartite system where we're saying it's either a nothing, designated, or non-designated. So what's the policy background that supports, where is it written as to what a non-designated asset is and how that's different to just an ordinary building?
Yeah, I think when you reference designated or non-designated, I think the two are the same. Once we decide it's locally important, it becomes a non-designated, and it would just appear as a relevant consideration. So I guess that's, is that when you're saying it then effectively becomes designated in that context?
What I'm trying to understand, though, in a report, Historic England say that the building lacks any special interest. So that's the professionals' statutory consultancy response to us, is that it is of no special interest, and that's presumably the reason why it isn't a designated heritage asset. So I'm just trying to understand the policy position on which we, in this case, you, decide that that is a non-designated historic asset. Is that your judgement as a report writer asking us, or is it on a list somewhere the council holds headed non-designated heritage assets? My final two questions, Chair, just relate to, in the report, and sorry, I can't remember the paragraph number, but there's a, in the part where there's reference made to the economic impact of this, because if we go with the officer recommendation, where we are turning down, I think it said 7.7 million pounds contributed to the local economy across 200 odd jobs during construction, 50 full-time equivalent jobs permanently, and the report goes on to say that that's not a material planning matter for us. Is that, looking at paragraph 99 of the MPPF, which to paraphrase says, "There's a presumption in favour of things that provide social and economic benefit", are we confident that saying that that is not a material planning matter when it's listed in the MPPF is something we want to stick to, given the recommendation to refuse?
Yeah, I can't also find that paragraph, but I didn't think it said it wasn't a material consideration. I thought it was more along the lines of, when you look at these things in the round, and you balance these things against each other, we don't feel we've got a proposal that warrants the removal of those buildings, and there's too many things wrong with it, and the sort of case for its complete loss has not been sort of robustly enough justified. That's not to say that particular question can't be revisited, but as part of the proposals we've got on the table at the moment, we feel it's appropriate to attach that reason for refusal.
Definitely says somewhere it's not a material planning consideration, because I made a note last night, this morning, 4am, when I was feeding my two-year-old.
councillor Stevenson, let me just bring David at this point, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I was similarly struggling to find where it says it's not a material consideration. I did look in the conclusion, paragraph 119, where it says that the proposal is considered to provide benefits to the local area, wider economy, by redeveloping a brownfield site, creating employment both during construction and with the intended end-use, will generate income for both the local and national economies, all which weigh in favour of the application. So in terms of the conclusion, it sets us, or in further, that it is a material consideration, which is something that should weigh in favour of the proposal.
councillor Stevenson.
My final point, Chair, was about, there's reference to the MPPF, paragraph 96c, and it's one of the justifications, so on the healthy lifestyle part, 97a gives two options, A and B, sorry, and one is the bit we've discussed in terms of distances and whether or not it complies to policy, and I think we've heard evidence it strictly it doesn't, but the justification given here is that that's the reason for refusal. And then you go on to say that 97b disapplies in this case, and you give reasons for it. But one of the justifications for refusal is paragraph 96c, and having read that paragraph, it doesn't refer to food at any point. It talks about the provision of what we describe as activity spaces, green space, et cetera, for physical activity to support healthy lives. And I just wonder whether the inclusion of that is appropriate as one of the reasons, when actually that paragraph itself reads more that it's talking around green space, physical activity, promoting healthy lifestyles, for example, if this was a gym or something, I guess we'd tell it as consideration, but it doesn't mention food in that part.
Yeah, I understand the point you make, councillor. I think the fact that it's a drive-through sort of plays into that, because it's by default sort of almost pitching itself that you drive to it as opposed to you walk to it or you cycle to it. And I think it's fair to say this is new ground for ourselves as well, in terms of grasping this particular issue. So in terms of the wording that we've drafted for that particular reason for refusal, we think we can run with both references to those policies, paragraph numbers. Ultimately, it feels like the applicant might be gearing up for an appeal and will look to defend it on those grounds, if members are minded to run with the officer recommendation on that particular reason.
Chair, can I just also just clarify this point about the 400 metres, because the report, and I apologise for this, doesn't really help you that much on this particular point, but if you go back to our SPD and on hot food takeaways, and we accept the applicant's point, and that's reflected in the fact that we're not recommending refusal against the policy, the SPD, that it's not contrary to SPD, because our hot food takeaways, SPD, talks about secondary schools and not primary schools. But what the SPD does say about walking distance, and it refers to the 400 metre walking distance, as it were, and as the applicant's representative says, that this is a figure which is adopted by many a local planning authorities to help them assess which is adopted by many a local planning authorities to help them assess what a walking distance is. But the SPD says that the four hundred metre zone for each school is a radius centred on the main school entrances from which the pupils use. So in effect, it's as the crow flies. Now, what we've done in the report is we've actually talked a little bit about, we've gone into some detail, paragraph sixty-two, to talk about the walking routes and give the walking routes. And they're at four hundred and fifty and five hundred and fifty metres. Four hundred and fifty from Grimes Dyke as a walking route, and around about five fifty as a walking route from White Lais Primary School. If you actually go on to Google Maps, or, sorry, not Google Maps, Google Earth, and do a measurement from the centre of the school buildings to the centre of the site, so adopting the SPD's approach of a radius, as it were, from the schools. Grimes Dyke Primary School is on that four hundred metres. It's more or less exactly four hundred metres, so it's caught by that walking distance. White Lais Primary School is around about four hundred and seventy metres, so it's beyond that four hundred metre radius. Then if you look at that in, as taking that four hundred metre radius or buffer, and you apply that to the MPPF test, which is around about where young people will congregate, and there is a definition, what is a congregation of young people and how frequently does it happen to have to happen for the policy to bite. But if you look at Hepton Approach, area of open space, which has got a mugger in it, that's more or less about two hundred and eighty metres or so to the mugger. So that's well within the four hundred metres. And the old Pavilion Plains playing field there, it's about two hundred metres from the centre of that site to the centre of the application site. So both of those would be within that four hundred metre radius of that site. So hopefully that just clarifies what we're talking about in terms of walking distances.
That does provide a lot more clarity than we were given, so thank you. The only question that arises from that, then, is this, all that is predicated on the definition of a fast food outlet, which the Town and Country Planning Act defines as the primary purpose being the sale of hot food for consumption off the site. I asked at the very beginning, is this going to be a restaurant? And it is. It's also a drive-through, but presumably we have to determine, or an appeal inspector will have to determine, what its primary purpose is. So did we have any evidence around sales usage, which way it goes?
Yeah, you're right, there'll be a big debate about that. What the MPPF does, which differs from what our supplementary planning document does, is our supplementary planning document just talks about hot food takeaways. But what the MPPF does is it talks about, says local planning authorities should refuse applications for hot food takeaways and fast food outlets. So it's broader than just our SPD, and we're not relying on the SPD, as you know, for the reason for refusal. We're relying on the MPPF. But yes, there will be no doubt a discussion and argument if this application were refused and went to appeal, about what actually constitutes a hot food takeaway and what constitutes a fast food outlet. But I think, you know, from our point of view, we're reasonably confident, arguing this particular applicant's proposal would fall within probably a mixture of those two things, just by the nature of the service that they provide.
Councillor Stevenson?
Thank you, Chair. I've just got a few questions around the junctions to start with. In terms of the new proposed right turn ghost lane, do we have any information on how many cars we think would fit in that, average car lengths, that would fit in that? The applicant mentioned about queuing at peak times, I think they said their assessments show one car. Do we have a view on that? And then just the junction coming up to Beldon Drive, the ghost lane that is there currently, will there be any change in the length of that? And then, lastly, on the highways, the road exiting the site, okay, will cars be able to turn left and right out of that? And if they are turning right out of that, across the ghost lane, do we envisage any issues there? And then the second thing I wanted to ask about was refusal item number five, so that's the non-designated heritage asset. And you talked about the importance of the building. So I just struggle a little bit with that one in particular, because I kind of feel if it was important, if it was well-loved by the community, would it look like what it does right now, which is a bit of an eyesore? So they are my questions, thank you.
So, I haven't got the data in front of me in terms of the junction assessment for the site access. You know, when a junction assessment is done, it sort of, it smooths out the number of vehicles going in and out over a peak hour, for instance, and that's how it's looked at. So I can't give you a definitive answer on the number of vehicles queuing, but the length of a right turn lane allows for sort of a deceleration element of it, you know, as well. So I haven't got a definitive answer on what we anticipate the number of vehicles queuing to turn right there, and it will differ at different times of the day. You have to remind, so in terms of the Beldon Drive right turn, I don't think there's much change to that right turn pocket that's there, which is an existing access. What there is a change to is that there is a proposed refuge in the middle of the junction to assist pedestrians crossing Beldon Drive. And what we haven't had is vehicle tracking to show that other vehicles, large vehicles, can make that turn safely. So that is that element as well. There was another highways element, wasn't there?
Just on that one, would that impact the acceleration time? And then it's the left and right turn.
Yeah, so it was about the vehicles coming out, and vehicles coming out will be able to turn right and left. And the arrangement is not abnormal to have that sort of overlap, you know, so that, and it is drivers to make the judgement of when it's safe to go.
Councillor Bitl.
Thank you. I was interested in the point councillor Stevenson made around the definition of hot food takeaway, not hot food takeaway, fast food outlet. And with that in mind, I just wondered if there was any indication on the plan that there was going to be a Deliveroo-style, and a lot of new McDonald's have that specific designated spot for delivery company, and these other delivery companies are available, to do their pickups. So I'd be interested to know whether that's the case, thank you.
Thanks, councillor Bitl. I'll come back to the other question as well, but I'll just take yours while I remember. I think the report does specifically talk about sort of designated parking spots for the operatives who do these deliveries. Internally, everything's not fully labelled up at this scale for me to be able to read So I'm unsure, I know exactly what you mean in the new ones, and I can only assume that it's an important part of the business model nowadays. So I'm not sure whether they've got a designated sort of hatch or area, but they're certainly making provision for them as part of the parking proposals. Just coming back on the non-designated heritage asset, I mean, ultimately, this, you know, the oldest part of the buildings are eighteenth century, that go back to when it was a turnpike road, so it's, there's a historic value to that. The fact that there's been a pub on that site for over two hundred and fifty years is kind of, sort of worthy in some respects in its own right. You then come on to the fact that, okay, well, that building has been knocked about quite a bit. Ultimately, the applicant's position is that the works that have been undertaken over the years have really significantly eroded any value that you could be attributed. We as officers have taken the view that actually most of the value is from when you see it, it's because it's on the corner and it's that frontage. And the frontage is still largely intact, it has been rendered, but because of those components still existing, and when you compare the two photographs, we feel that it's still got that value. So there's just essentially a disagreement on how much weight you put to the historical But we think it's enough to be an issue with these proposals as they currently stand. If that helps at all.
Councillor Ray?
I mean, could it be the case, it is a significant building on the A sixty-four, that the frontage, which is the bit that is significant, could be incorporated into the McDonald's sign? Is that something they could do? Because in out, on Easterleigh Road, they've got an old building that has been developed as a McDonald's, and obviously they've put other bits in. So is that a possibility that you could retain that?
I think this is part of the issue, is that from McDonald's point of view, they haven't really at any point considered retention and redevelopment. It's always been sort of demolition and one of the purpose-built modular buildings. So there is the potential that they could do something bespoke. I'm sure it will cause them lots of problems, particularly if they want a drive-through component, because that very much dictates you need to be able to get to at least two sides of the building, or more generally, you need to get round three sides of it. So I suspect it's going to be difficult for them, and that's why they've not done it. But we would, as officers, like them to go through that exercise, and the sort of proposals are silent on that particular topic, again, because they don't think the value's there.
Right, thank you, everyone. Can we now move on to any comments? Councillor Miller?
Yeah, I think the highways reasons for refusal are very solid, and if it goes to, if we do accept the officer's recommendation and refuse it, hopefully if it goes to appeal, I think that there's really strong grounds to not overturn that. However, in terms of the heritage asset and refusal point five, I broadly speaking, do agree with the applicant that this is no longer any, you know, the image we saw from nineteen ten unfortunately is a long distant memory of what the building is like now, and I think it is a very weak reason for refusal, and slightly confused still around some of the definitions. So my personal preference would be that we don't agree to that reason for refusal, and remove that and focus on the other ones, which I do believe are quite solid, really.
Councillor Stevenson?
Well, I came to the meeting based on the paperwork with a view that I would probably move a recommendation, that we would refuse it on the first three points and drop refusal four and five, on the basis, I'll just explain the reasons why. Because on the issue of public health, I don't think the updated MPPF policy is sufficiently helpful or robust enough. And we've discussed that, because we've basically said we've had to refer back to our older local policy to find distances and assess what we think is a distance. So it hasn't yet been tested. There's no case law mentioned on the definition of it. And I think that the arguments on distances were, in the report, were not justified. And then just from a principled point of view, I can sort of understand the secondary school aspect we've adopted in our local policy, because they are active customers. Kids leave in school with cash in their pockets, they can get buses, ride their bikes, go to Macky D's on the way home, get that. Primary schools, I think we're pushing it a bit, you know, what we're actually talking about, the customer base there is parents. And that comes down to parental choice, individual responsibility, freedom to spend one's money on what one wishes. So I struggled with that. And I was going to move that recommendation right up until the point David elaborated and gave us the issue of the radius. And I think, actually, at that point, it would probably be quite useful for us and other councils to have some case law on this, and if that is an appeal point, whilst I don't want to sort of say, let somebody else make a difficult decision, would probably be quite useful to have an inspector make a judgement on that. My preferred judgement is that they would find the council's wrong and it's a silly policy. So on that point, I'll concede, and I wouldn't have had the votes in the room anyway, I suspect. So I'll concede on that point. But I think councillor Miller is entirely correct on the issue of heritage. This is on my daily commute in and out of my neighbouring ward, the civic hall, it is an eyesore that's there. And the reason I think we need to remove this from the refusal decision is because the impact that might have on what happens on the site in future. Because if we're saying that anything that happens on that site has to retain that, we're effectively saying it has to be a pub or a taxi office, which we refuse and then the appeal granted permission for. So we're limiting the scope of what can happen. And when you look just further down the A sixty-four, and you get to your destination of Tadcaster, you'll see what happens when either an authority or a brewery owner doesn't wish to regenerate, it just dilapidates, and it gets worse and worse, and brings an area that's already pretty deprived into further deprivation. So I worry that us including that as a refusal will actually limit what could happen in future. And the comment around bespoke McDonald's, I don't, even if they came back and did that, they're not going to overcome some of those highways points that we've discussed anywhere. So it's probably a waste of time. So if councillor Miller wants to move his very sensible recommendation, I'll be more than happy to second it.
Are there any other comments before I bring councillor Miller? Councillor Miller? Sorry, councillor Lloyd?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I'm just going to agree with councillor Miller in terms of highways. I could see this being a replication of what I've got in my ward, and I just don't think the junction, which is a busy junction, and the road is sufficient enough for it.
Councillor Serry?
Yeah, just a comment, I'm just, you know, yeah, it's an old building, I've just got concerns that anything going forwards, we've got issues with highways, so how are we going to develop this site going forward is a concern. But yeah, hopefully something can be resolved.
Right, councillor Miller?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we support the recommendation based on reasons one to four, but that we remove reason number five from the refusal.
And our second chair. Let me bring David in to this before we move, and just if he can sum up, and then obviously we can just go back again with the recommendation, yeah? And then whoever wants to propose and second it.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Well, it seems to be that members are...
Okay, thank you Chair. Well, it seems to be that members are, well, those who've spoken seem to be of a strong view that reasons one to four are sustainable, but reason five in respect of the non-designated heritage asset isn't an argument that we could necessarily, necessarily sustain as appeal. And also concerns about the implication that for the future development of the site. So wish to, to drop that particular reason. So it's really for members to vote on the amended proposal from councillor Miller that's been seconded by councillor Stevenson Chair.
Right. All in favour? Anyone against? Any abstentions? I'm looking at the clock to announce the result.
That was unanimously counted.
Thank you. Right, in that case, date and the time of the next meeting will be Tuesday, Tuesday, sorry, Thursday 29th of May 2025 and 1:30pm. And that concludes the meeting. If everyone could please vacate the room and before you leave, take your cups and glasses back where you found them and have a, enjoy the rest of your day. Thank you.